Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. Today is September 24th, 2024. The time is now 6:01 PM. Let the attendance show that we are, we have all but trustee Cervantes in attendance today. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I had a motion by trustee Correio, second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Mr. Chair, I had an item I wanted to discuss with you.
Sure. Alright, well let's finish, let me just finish reading out. So the motion is adopted to adopt the agenda 6-0. Trustee Solis.
I wanted to see if we could move item... I wanted to see if we could move item one from the informational items on O to under J, reports. There's gonna be individuals here that are gonna wanna speak, so I was wondering if we could move it higher up on the agenda.
So there is a request and a motion to move item M1. No, sorry. You said information item, sorry.
Yeah, O1.
O1. To the J section. Okay. So that would follow the school reports. So we have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Solis for changing the agenda, second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries 6-0, so we will move into our reports section. Following our school reports, we will have the first item that was originally on the information items. At this point, we open up for any comments from the public on any closed session items.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no calls at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we will, we will head out to closed session and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, Central Community. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Tonight is Tuesday, September 24, 2024. The time is now 7:00 p.m. Our attendance shows all but Trustee Cervantes in attendance. Reporting out on a few items taken during closed session. On item E1, we had a motion by Trustee Corio, second by Trustee Solis. Item passed 5-1 with a nava being registered by Trustee Sellers. On item E2, we had a motion by Trustee Corio, second by Trustee Mailing. Item passed 6-0. And with that, I'll ask Vice President Corio to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I invite Mrs. Ceballos and Mrs. Saecul to share with us our community engagement information?
Good evening. If you wish to address the board, call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board before the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número 559-276-3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud propuesto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la Mesa Directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish in Punjabi should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150. By noon on Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la Mesa Directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español y Punjabi, llame al 559-274-4700, extensión 10150. El viernes antes de la reunión y antes del mediodía o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Good evening. Si quieres hablar de tu agenda, puedes hablar de tu agenda. Call 518-277-3050. At the entrance, you can see a form. First of all, you can call the board. If you want to talk about your agenda, you can come up with your own ideas. If you want to talk about your agenda, you can talk about your agenda. You are welcome to meet the board. If there is any idea to make. If there is a translator in Punjabi. First of all, thank the board. Until midnight, at 48 hours. If there is a translator, you can talk to him. Thank you.
Thank you. We next move on to our first presentations, which is involving student recognition, especially around celebration of Latinx Heritage Month as well as our spirit of 9/11 arcantes. I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Boatright.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, we do have a new addition this year with our resolutions. And as you mentioned, we are starting tonight with a celebration for Latinx Heritage Month.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Board President Singh and Superintendent Davis. I would like to start this agenda item by introducing Angel Garcia de Jesús, who will be interpreting the information to you in Misteco Bajo. He is a student at Justin Garza High School and has been living in the city for one year. He is originally from the state of Guerrero, Mexico. Misteco Bajo and Misteco Alto are some of the major indigenous languages spoken in our valley.
I'm from Guerrero, Oaxaca. I'm from Mexico, Guanajuato. Angel Garcia de Jesús is from the school preparatoria, grade 12. I'm from Justin Garza. I'm from New York. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from New York. I'm from New York. I'm from presentá. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from the last meeting of the board. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from Erencia Latin. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from December. I'm from October. I'm from 2024. I'm from here. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from the student Jackie Hernández. I'm from the school preparatoria Justin Garza. I'm from La Vila. I'm from New York. I'm from here. I'm from here. I'm from the district. I'm from Guanajuato. I'm from here. 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 I'm from Latinx. Gracias.
So now I will translate to you and our families at home in Spanish. Para nuestras familias habla hispanas. Soy doctora Marilin López, Asistente Superintendente de Servicios de Estudiantes y Familias. Comienzo esta agenda introduciendo a nuestro estudiante Angel García de Jesús, quien atiende la escuela preparatoria Justin Garza y va a traducir en Misteco Bajo. Misteco Bajo y Misteco Alto son dos de los idiomas nativos más hablados en nuestra comunidad. Now in English. So here is our next student that we have from Justin Garza. During our last board meeting, we adopted a proclamation declaring September 15 through October 15 as National Latinx Heritage Month. Today, we have student Jackie Hernández from Justin Garza High School performing a folklorico dance to showcase some of the opportunities provided to our students from our schools. This will kick off a series of weekly social media posts from our district where our community will be provided with an overview of our district and how we embrace our Latinx culture.
Me gustan las abaneñas, orantas impresumidas. Se bañan y se componen, y siempre descoloridas. Me gustan las abaneñas, orantas impresumidas. Se bañan y se componen, y siempre descoloridas. ¡Mariguita mi alma! Yo te lo decía. Que te lo trajo mi vida, a veces te ría. ¡Mariguita mi alma! Yo te lo decía. Yo te lo decía. Que te dio temprano mi vida, a veces servía.
Para nuestras familias habla hispana en casa. Durante nuestra última reunión de la mesa, declaramos la resolución que proclama el Mes Nacional de la Herencia Latinx de 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre. Hoy tuvimos el orgullo de tener aquí a nuestra danzante Jackie Hernandez de la escuela preparatoria Justin Garza, que realizó un baile folclórico para mostrar algunas de las oportunidades que brindamos en nuestras escuelas para expresar su herencia latina. Esta dará inicio a una serie de publicaciones semanales en las redes sociales de nuestro distrito donde se le brindará a nuestra comunidad una descripción general de cómo nuestro distrito se envuelve en nuestra cultura latina.
Thank you. Next, we turn to the Spirit of 9/11 art contest.
Yes, thank you. So I'm excited tonight to invite you or invite our student to the podium. She is our Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, the 9/11 Grand Prize Art Contest winner, Raj Kiran Kaur Jandhu. I'd also like to invite up to the podium Rosie King, who was a teacher librarian from El Capitan that assisted her on this project.
This painting honors the 2,977 victims taken from their loved ones and how we amassed as a nation to honor and protect. The marble stone depicts immortality echoing their eternal existence in our hearts. The nature symbolizes life and respect. The water below defines a reflection of our hero's contributions. To symbolize resilience, I used acrylic paints. The gathering has many firefighters, medics, and police officers to show how they aided so bravely in this tragedy. Together, I want us to recognize that those who risked their lives to help others should be remembered equally alongside the lost. Thank you.
And as they make their way around to shake your hands, I'd also like to mention that they will be flying to New York City to the site of 9/11.
Next, we move to our employee association highlights. Can we invite up our Central Unified Teachers Association President Laura Bolton?
Thank you again for having me. I only have one brief thing to share with you. We have a teacher, Nick Giandrea, who submitted an application for an IFT grant. That's an Institute for Teaching grant. He received a $5,000 grant for a project that will enable him and his students to build one-fourth scale models of the Mars Perseverance Rover. And so it's really exciting that they're going to have this money to do this really exciting project. So I thought I would share it with you because it's very positive and we're proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we invite up California School Employees Association President Angie Gary.
Hi, guys. Good evening. I'm just pleased to report that we had a great start of the year so far. Things have been going pretty smoothly. I just wanted to thank all our classified members for their dedication, hard work getting this first of the year started. While they may not always be in the spotlight, their efforts are noticed and deeply appreciated. I also wanted to thank the board for the continued support you guys give us and also for giving me a voice here to give concerns, positive feedback, or anything. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We next turn to our reports. Our first section is around our school reports. If we can invite up Dr. Nate Mullen from Teague Elementary School.
Well, good evening, Central Unified Board of Directors and Miss Superintendent Davis. Thank you for the opportunity to share the good things that are happening at Teague Elementary School. There's quite a bit going on there, and I have, the time is short, so I wouldn't be brief, but just give you a good idea of what's happening there. First and foremost, we understand our school as a place where there should be, oh, thank you, rigorous academic instruction, a place where we can build positive relationships with our students and also offer them opportunities to have self-improvement and to grow as individuals. The first slide, I just want to go to the next one. Oh, I have to do it. There we go. Thank you. But I'm happy to report that we actually are making growth and in fact, in looking at just recent years, we actually bested our 2019 COVID ELA SBACK percentage with us gaining 32.5, which is an 8.9% growth over last year. And also want to highlight the fact that we were able to move our students from 6.95% from our last year's in math. So we're up to 22.5 right now in our math. And we know there's work to do, but we are moving forward. Our students are engaging in the learning. Our teachers are taking on the task. And there's a few things that contribute to that. Our IABs, our small group instruction, and also just the fact that our teachers are growing in their understanding that our students are not low-performing, but simply underperforming. So we are taking the efforts that we can to move them forward so that they can begin to showcase who they really are as learners and to grow. So I think of all the things that I would say are helping us grow, it's just that underneath current of continuous improvement and the IABs and the small group instructions are just ways that we can show those things coming through. Also want to highlight that we're doing other fun things to engage our students, like we're doing an actual mock election this week to elect our student council members. So our students are getting a real-life view of what it means to be a voter, and so that's another great thing happening, as well as our art galleries that are happening. And of course, you all know about our athletics, where our students are consistently noted somewhere in the top in how they're performing. So academically and sports-wise, Teague is really growing and making its an impact. But we have more work to do. One of those areas where we do want to grow is in our attendance rate and our chronic absenteeism. As much as we love to have our students explore new ways to learn and to grow, we know that if they're not there, they can't get the instruction. And we know that it's going to take more than just sitting out of Parents' Square. So we're taking some specific actions to really help our students build a sense of connection. One of those is we're targeting the families that were chronically absent last year. We know if they have a history and a pattern, that that's something we should pay attention to, and as soon as we see it rear its head, that we can kind of try to cut it off at the pass and build relationships. Also, one of the things we've implemented this year is our calls, our daily calls following the attendance window. Most of you know that Teague is a walking school, so there's the opportunity for our kids to get there if there's not barriers that are prohibiting them. So we figure if we can just make those calls proactively, soon as that window closes for attendance, that perhaps we can get some more of them down to the campus. And then there's other programs we have, like Stellar Attendance, we have Live School, and then just for some students, a check-in, check-out system, where we can just make sure that their needs are being met and that they're feeling a sense of connection. A couple of really helpful things have been for us this year is the addition of our FOL and making connections with their families, as well as we did bring on a community school coordinator, which actually, them working in tandem really serves our students and serves our families in making sure that their resource and attendance needs can be met. So we have some areas to grow in that way, and we're really wanting to see some effort, the fruit of our efforts. So we're just going to keep, we're going to keep moving forward. We're also doing some exciting things in early literacy. I really appreciate that the district has opened up letters to us, so seven of, eight of our teachers have, in our early literacy are going through it. All three of us administrators are going to be going through the cohort. We are piling, and of course, UFLY 95%, like several of other schools. And there's a lot of activity, a lot of great, just, there's a buzz of learning and a buzz of growth at Teague right now, and we are just really excited to see where we're going to end up with our students learning about phonics. And another thing I'd like to highlight at the bottom, our vice principal, Delia Sanchez, has started an early literacy committee where she can assist our teachers in just kind of digesting and working through not only letters, but the 95% and UFLY adoptions that we're testing out. So some really wonderful things happening, giving some attention to that early literacy where it really needs to take place. Of course, you can see we have AmeriCorp there assisting us with one-on-one tutoring. We have our, we have two reading lab teachers. So we have quite a few resources at our disposal, and we were wanting to make the best of them because our kids deserve it and they can do it. Accountability and continuous improvement, while we are really just, I mean, not trying anything new, brand-new, we are just focusing on standard-based guided best practices in our classrooms. When we get in, that's what we're looking for. We're looking to see that students are talking to one another using academic language, that they are able to share with one another, they're active and engaged in class, even doing things as simple as having a respect agreements up and different ways to support students on how to be great students in the classroom. That's happening, as well as our PLC work. I'm thankful that we've had Solutions Tree to really help and give us some definition behind how we can be effective PLCs, really understanding common formative assessments and making sure that what we are doing is not just common, but it's actually on grade level and it's based on our core impact standards. One of the most recent things we did, which is really helpful, was just to establish common commitments and common actions that we're going to do in our PLCs. Like, when we come together, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it to impact student learning? So there's exciting work going on there, much more to do. In our classrooms, how, we have three administrators, for those of you who don't know, so there's myself, and two vice principals, and we develop a really great system for being able to track when we're getting into classrooms, just making sure we're not stumbling over one another, but to really support our teachers in the best way possible. They're doing hard work, they're doing good work, and we just want to support that and provide ways that they can improve and actually allow them to express how they can improve via the goal settings and what we're able to see in classrooms. We meet on a weekly, our administrative team meet on a weekly basis just to review what we're seeing in data. Maybe there's something we need to change, maybe we can grow in a certain way or another. But that's what we do to really help and support our teachers and the work that they're doing in their classrooms. So making it count for kids, there's 10 minutes worth of stuff that can be said on that, but briefly, we are a community school and we are digging into, as you can see, their asset mapping, figuring out what we have to offer our kids through our community and through Teague. We're working actively with our ELOP program just to make sure that we're just drilling on some ways that support our kids, not just in fun enrichment ways, but academically. So we're looking at that closely, and we're planning on having some monthly literacy, monthly literacy events for parents and families that's in the works right now. So that's what we're really digging into with respect to community schools. We've actually brought Avid on this year as well, so we're focusing on the W writing portion of the WICER model of Avid. So like I said, there's a lot happening, and our kids are showing up and they are engaged, and it's good to see them on our campuses. They, our campus looks great, by the way. Our grass is green, there's things that are happening to improve, so we appreciate those as well. Wow, and that's it. Once again, I just want to thank you all because it's great to highlight what's happening at Teague. But this is my fourth year, and I am proud to be there and support our kids and support our families and to support our teachers, and thank you for what you do to support us.
Oh, you're not done yet, Dr. Mullen. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa?
One of my questions is, on the engagement slide, what does FOL stand for?
Family Outreach Liaison.
Thank you. That's okay.
Ms. Betty.
So, one of the things I see as far as the engagement, at least in comparison to 2022, 2023, you've maintained the same level of attendance, which is great. It's high, and I know that part of the conversation in most of these presentations is how do we increase attendance? Anything you've been able to identify in reaching out to the families to figure out what more we need to provide them or help them understand the importance of their students being in the classroom and learning?
Yeah. I would say the thing we see the most is just that, the understanding of how, regardless of whether it's a vacation or a sick day, that there's an impact. There's a distinct impact, and because they're missing. So that's what we're really trying to communicate, and we're trying to build relationships around so that we can have the grace to communicate the importance of them being there, yes, hearing what they're going through or the things that they're dealing with, but also emphasizing that their students' future is what we're looking to support.
Awesome, thank you. And I love hearing that you and your administrative support team is also in the classroom, making sure that we are teaching at grade level and reinforcing the idea that our students, if challenged, they can, they can learn, they have the ability to do so. Just some of them have different languages and are at different levels of their learning life. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to read and hear about the progress that you've made at that campus in four years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kerfa?
Thank you, President Singh, and Dr. Mullen, thank you for the presentation. There's a lot of great things happening at Teague, and as we all know, the Teague community, especially the staff at Teague, are very mighty. I do want to ask about the math scores on that, sorry, on that first slide, because what can we do to increase our math scores at Teague? Because we're at 22% that proficient.
Yeah. Well, I think one of the things we can do is just in our, in our drop-ins and observing teachers, just as administrative team, support what we're seeing, not what we're seeing, but support practices that can support our teachers, also having them a part of the conversation more about what we're seeing, and that discussion about how we're impacting students based on those practices. I think the more we do the IABs, and the, IABs are interim assessment benchmark tests, the more we can develop our students in taking those and understanding what that looks like in the SBACK world, I think that we're going to support them a whole lot better. So each year, we get just a little bit better at using those and using them as a tool because we are looking at the data based on SBACK in this particular instance.
Well, thank you, sir. And then let us, as a board, know how we can help you help our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just also want to thank you, Dr. Mullen. I appreciate you sharing obviously like about the chronic absenteeism. That's not an issue only at Teague, it's not only an issue at our district, it's something that we're seeing really throughout the state and the country, but I appreciate that you haven't given up in times of finding innovative and creative ways to make sure our students understand the importance of being at school and their parents are doing everything they can to support them. So thank you to you and your team.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now you're done. Next, can we invite Next, can we invite up Principal Holtermann from Central High School?
Thank you, President Singh, Superintendent Davis, members of the Board of Trustees. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to be able to share about Central High School. Also want to thank my administrative team, our administrative team, Melissa Mullin, our VP, and Shannon Monroe, our GLD, who's also educator administrator of the year for Central Unified. Thank you for being here. We'll start with the first, I went the wrong way.
Go the other way.
The other way.
Yeah, just past TEAG's.
Apologies for that. For academic celebrations, we're encouraged by our growth in English Language Arts and in Science on the CAFS. We believe our work with the formative assessment grading, and grading has really influenced this, allowing students to go back and error-analyze or relearn standards and turn it in again or retake an exam is helping our students master the standards at an even greater level. Students are also specifically taught rubrics, given practice exams, and did small group instruction around those standards. Just, we talked about with Mr. Mullin, math is an opportunity for us. We remain the same level as last year. The math benchmark overpredicted a little bit for us, and that was another analysis. Our math team took it personal. We are planning to give more IABs, practice exams, and do further review sessions. We found another pocket with our early college students who'd gone on to take the college class because they hadn't spent a year in math. We, our percentage was not as great as we wanted there, too, so we have, we have a plan for that. Our graduation rate remains at 94.5%. With 200 students, our graduating class, every student's a half percent. We know who those students are. We have a current list of seniors that our administration and counselors are working with that outlines the current credits, interventions, and meetings held. Everyone will be met with multiple times this year, but the high-need students will be met with and monitored more frequently to ensure on-track for graduation. Not up here, but of note, our F rates dropped three years in a row. The percent of students with one or more Fs in '21, in the end of the 2021 school year, was 48.4%. That was an anomaly. Twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two was 23, or 23.8%, and in '22, '23, it was 15.9%. And then last year, it was 11.8%. But also of note is our African-American subgroup that was just at 7% last year, so pretty, pretty impressed with a lot of, a lot of things going on, but understand there's opportunities. Engagement. Our attendance went up 0.2%, and our chronic absenteeism went down 2.4% from '23 to last year. And we have a lot of people and processes in place to help bring attendance up and chronic absenteeism down. Thomas Page, you see their pictures up there. Thomas Page is our intervention specialist who works with students who are struggling, even doing home visits. Thomas is also Central Unified Classified Employee of the Year, that's a big honor, too. We had two at Central High School, so thank you very much. Marlene Perez is our homeschool liaison, who spends a lot of time contacting parents and helping us with parent engagement. And Yanet Gallegos is our family outreach liaison, FOL, who is also highly engaged in connecting our families to our students and making sure students and families are engaged. We have added attendance recognition incentives this year for our students in classes with higher levels. That's an added thing that we did this year. Switching to the restorative system. Regarding our restorative system, when we left school in the spring of 2021, we gave everybody on staff the book Discipline That Restores, written by Ron and Rock St. Clausen, who are here from, from Fresno Pacific. We also brought them into our school for a summer in-service, and over the course of the next year, we went chapter by chapter with our book and our professional developments with our staff. The purpose was to build the foundation, is it breaking? Or is it me hearing it funny? The purpose of this was to build the foundation for our CHS team, not only to have a toolkit for, but also an understanding of what restorative practices looks like. Is it because of where my mouth is? It also involves a respect agreement in every class, and as a staff, we, the administration, have also done a respect agreement with our staff to model those expectations. And three years later, we've observed a drop in suspensions and discipline in general, from 4.5 in '21, '22 to 3, 3% this past year. When you look up there, you can see our grisly claws. They reinforce all the expectations, and they're posted everywhere. Come prepared, live responsibly, act safely, work together, show and show respect. Our students are very, very responsible as a whole and respectful in general. If you visit our campus, you'll see very little trash and high levels of respect. We have clause books given to our students to redeem at the student store and a clause luncheon for students to demonstrate this, and our parents, our parents, our staff nominate those students for those incentives, and we were just awarded the California Gold PBIS recognition for Central High School. We're proud of that. Another element of our campus is our tremendous, that's a tremendous positive, is our resource officer, Joe Ruiz. He's out and about positively connecting with our students, at the same time providing a safety element that's optimal for all that goes on in a high school. He also presents to our staff and our students and our community for further understandings and engagement. He presented and spent time meeting with students and families that are back to school night just recently, and he, with two of our students, Taylor Furtado and Michael Villa Via, did a video called Warning Signs that highlights the process of identifying potential dangers on campus. The Sheriff's Department has, has taken this video and they're, they're utilizing it with outside agencies and other schools with everybody's permission. It's another great aspect of the partnership that we have with our SRO. With all the restorative practices and relationship building, we believe that the atmosphere at Central High School is very conducive to positivity and high levels of student engagement and learning, and we're proud that a student who may need a smaller campus or something different has, finds success there. Accountability and continuous improvement. Over the course of the last 10 years, we have refined what we expect and support in our classrooms. We have what we call high-impact instructional and culturally responsive practices. These have come about through district and individual professional developments and work with outside agencies like Math Solutions, the English Learner Group, and the California Ed Partners, or the on-track work that we've been doing. And as a staff, we've done additional book studies on grading and culturally responsive teaching. What we look for are posted learning outcomes with success criteria, structured student interaction, where students work together and learn together, and this is one of the most culturally responsive practices, academic and content vocabulary and sentence frames. I know these are in the nuts and bolts, but this is what we look for, this is what we respond to when we do drop-ins in classrooms. The restorative practices that we talked about previously, and then grading in general, also described in the academic slide, and thank you again for the passage of the board policy on grading. It, it affirms the work that we've been doing for the last three years, and we do think it's, it's strong work that we want to continue. We are working to refine our professional learning communities, those practices and data to adjust our practices. This is a further focus for us or an opportunity. However, this year, we're WASC in February, so between now and then, a lot of our professional learnings will be, will be utilizing the WASC process, because that, that document, that process is a self-study where the, the teachers and the staff and families are involved. Our administrative team has set a goal of being in classrooms five, five times a week to provide the support and guidance for all of our practices. We meet as a team in what we call huddles, where we discuss the classroom observation data, and we give feedback to support our staff. And the last slide is making it count for kids. This is a great partnership that we have with Fresno City College. It allows our students to take dual enrollment classes, classes, and has been a tremendous success and great for our students. We currently have 33% of our students enrolled in dual enrollment. This year, we have 10 to 12 students of our students who will graduate with an associate's degree, and many with college. I know, that's crazy, and it's awesome, and we're excited. Ranging from three to 60 units because of the, and because of the augmented nature of the grades, we have quite a few students who are over a 4.5 right now, and I looked, I have one student with a 4.5997. So I was going to say 4.6, but I wanted to be honest. The date, over the, to date, over the past three years, we've earned over 3,300 credits. With our 26 classes this year, our students are projected to earn approximately 2,900 more credits. You can see that we're picking up critical mass as a school, and our pass rate for these classes is 96%. That pass rate for the past summer was 96.86, or I'm sorry, for the past spring was 96.86, which is higher than almost any school that you'll find anywhere, and even higher than the Fresno City, yeah, Fresno City College regular program, and 100% of our students passed the dual enrollment classes this summer. This is because of the hard work of our students, the facilitators, and our staff in general. We appreciate the opportunity to, to have this in conjunction with our ag, our criminology, our health careers, and our CTE pathways as well. Central High School has an amazing staff and is making positive strides in many ways, and we appreciate the support of all of you for our programs and our students, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Go Grizzlies!
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Creo?
No questions, just a few comments. I'm always impressed with the work that you're doing at that campus, and given the size of the campus, the ability to have and implement some really transformative practices for our students, and the fact that you have the support from your school to be able to do that, and I hope that we can, and you continue to be able to do that as, as it grows. The only question, actually, I don't, I lied. Just thank you for the hard work that you're doing there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Principal Holtermann, for all the fine work you're doing. Very excited about this school year, and, and kind of as you alluded to, as we, as we grow the school, especially next year, all the fine work that I'll continue.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next, we turn to item K, oh, sorry, no, O1, I apologize, which we, we have moved up from the agenda. This is our initially written as our information item, we've moved it up to a report, and this is to receive information regarding routine deferred maintenance plan at various school sites. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal, or, or rather Director Bott.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and Board members. This evening, we'll be reviewing our deferred maintenance plan.
Give me one second. All right.
So, the deferred maintenance plan are for projects that are not regular routine maintenance, and they are usually classified as major repairs or replacement, and typically do not require DSA review or an architect to design the repair. A couple of the areas of the building system that are part of deferred maintenance are roofing repairs, floor covering replacements, heating and air conditioning systems, parking lot and play courts, electrical, furniture, plumbing, and hazard abatement such as asbestos. And with that, we also have our routine restricted maintenance, which is the daily ongoing maintenance of school buildings to repair, restore, or renovate school properties. Now, the difference between deferred maintenance and routine restricted maintenance, a couple items are the cost. Typically, our routine restricted maintenance is lower cost, and our deferred maintenance will be at a higher cost. It, our routine restricted is also typically single item versus where a deferred maintenance project would be multiple items. A couple other key points, typically on the deferred maintenance and the routine restricted maintenance, it is a like-for-like. It is, we're replacing or repairing something for the same thing. A little explanation on repair, restore and renovate. Repair, you know, we're fixing what's there. There may be a tear or a rip on a carpet, we're going to repair that carpet as is. Restore, something similar to wax floors, where we're waxing the floors to bring the shine back. And renovating is we're replacing what's currently there, what was there. So it's the same thing going back, but newer. Something like that would be flooring or HVAC, where typical HVAC units replaced with another similar one, or flooring where carpet is replaced with similar carpet. As of last year, deferred maintenance came under my umbrella, under MOT. Prior to that, it was under facilities. So for the past two year, and going into our second year, we have, came up with a plan, and that's what you'll be seeing going forward. So as I was discussing the plan, there's also the process, which is, you know, conducting assessments of the school sites, updating the list of projects and setting up priorities, and then implementing a multi-year maintenance plan. So the next few slides are some of those components that I went over in slide two. We have listed out school sites and when certain projects were completed, and to provide some information. I wanted to, a couple notes on the columns. You know, the site, the last project completed, next project planned, and the notes. The last project completed is large project, something that would have probably came back to the board and is, in previous board meetings. The next planned project is based off a previous project, and the lifespan, we're trying to estimate when we can do that project and redo it. And then the notes are notes based on that previous project, not on the upcoming project or anything planned. There are data points missing out of a lot of my sheets. The deferred maintenance was not captured typically in this format. With the help of John Rodriguez, our director of facilities, we have put this together, going through our notes and documentation to populate this, but I'm finding more projects have done, have been done over the time that I'm not privy to, so we're going to continue to look through board items and old board agendas to find other projects that would happen, so we have a very accurate list. So the roofs, I just want to highlight a couple of them. Hernan Barstow was done probably in, back in 2016, 2017, and last year, we did the partial repairs at Saroyan and Steinbeck, and Central East High School, we did the flat roof on top of the 300's building. So with, sorry, you know what? Sorry, I missed a part. A couple different types of the roofs that we currently have, we have shingle roofs, we have metal roofs, and we have two-ply membranes. Another way to look at it is we have high slope, metal roofs, and low slope. High roof, or high slope is our typical shingles. Metal roofs can be high-sloped also, but they're metal, and we have two-ply membrane, which is a low slope or a flat roof, which is almost kind of like a rubber, where it's sealing the roof. The typical lifespan is 20 years, 40 years, and 35 years respectively, and the warranty is 20 years, 35 years, and 30 years respectively. Typically, school sites will get roof replacements done during modernization, and deferred maintenance will make major repairs on roofs as needed. So the floor coverings, typically about 10 to 15 years of a lifespan, does depend on if we're at an elementary or in a high school, depending on the usage. The warranty is on 10 years on the install, and school sites will get classroom floors replaced during modernization, and again, deferred maintenance will replace flooring based on usage. Last year, we did 106 classrooms, spread out between about five, five school sites. So the next is painting. The lifespan can be about 15 to 20 years with a warranty of 10 years. School sites will get painted inside and outside during modernization, and deferred maintenance and routine restricted, we paint buildings as needed. Little bit of an example of something we do in routine restricted maintenance is paint interior hallways at certain campuses or taking care of graffiti. Next is HVAC. The typical lifespan is about 15 years with a warranty of five years. We have school sites, school sites will get HVAC units changed out during modernization, and we, under deferred maintenance and routine restricted, will replace HVAC units as they go down. A couple highlights from the past couple years is Hernan Barstow, Liddell Elementary, Saroyan Elementary, Steinbeck Elementary, and Central East High School had major projects within the last couple years. Next, fire alarms and PAs. Lifespan, 20 years on a fire alarm system, 10 years on the PA speakers. We have a typical warranty on the fire alarm system of one year, and three years on the actual PA speakers. School sites will get fire alarm and PA systems replaced during modernization, and deferred maintenance and routine restricted, we take care of replacements based on failures, and we'll make repairs to fire alarms systems. Low clarification, fire alarm repair and replacements are for like. We don't not, we cannot add. If we were going to be adding to the fire life safety, that would have to go through design and go through DSA. And last year, we also did El Capitan's PA system, that was something we upgraded. That was something we upgraded. All right. Next is parking lots, or asphalt and parking lots. The lifespan is about 15 to 20 years with a warranty of 10 to 15. That is a little dependent on contract language. We can ask for a certain warranty in the contract. And school sites will have their parking lots and play courts included in modernizations. When we're talking about asphalt, we're talking about the play courts where the basketball courts are and the play areas. And under deferred maintenance and routine repair, we reseal, repair, and restripe those parking, those play courts and the parking lots. So, under this one, I do want to point out, this list does not include pending projects with our facilities department that Mr. Rodriguez is working on, and I'm going to have him come up and speak about that.
Thank you, Jesse. So, the, what we're, Facilities is working on currently is the Houghton Kearney parking lot. That is out of DSA, and we are ready to actually bid that project out. So, we're most likely going to bid out in the spring because that's when contractors are looking for their summer work. We'll get better numbers that way. And then the summer will, in the bid docs, will have a schedule in there that will tell the contractor that we want this project done in the summer. So, there's a lot of demo, a lot of things that are going on. Currently, we're kind of looking at a temporary additional parking lot at the south side of the Teague parking lot that we're working on. And once we get approval on that particular item, we'll share that with the principal. And that's what we're doing right now with Facilities. And we have other road projects that we're doing at Shields and Raleigh that we're doing for this, in connection with the city's requirements. So, a lot of work, a lot of asphalt work. I'll turn it back to Mr. Bass.
Do you have him on the computer? You have a question?
All right. Thank you. So, next, we'll switch over to furniture. So, with furniture, there's a 20-year lifespan on classroom furniture, one year on the material. And typically, a new schools, or when a school site gets modernized, they will get new furniture. And under the deferred maintenance, we're going to replace classroom furniture as needed based on a assessment. As you guys know, last year, the board approved the replacement of all student classroom furniture at Houghton Kearney Elementary. One note on the warranty on all these areas, if the number looks small, it's typically going to be on the part, like the chair is going to have a one-year defect warranty. They might have a lifetime warranty on structural defect, but that means if the chair completely breaks. So, there could be different levels. I stuck with what's probably the warranty we're going to use most, which is our wear and tear and coming straight out of the box defective. And the last one I'm going to go over is our security cameras. This kind of lives in the hazard abatements and just security in general with schools, but I wanted to highlight this one specifically since we did a lot of work over the past few years with this. The lifespan on the cameras themselves are five to 10 years, depending on where the camera is placed. If it's a camera under an eve or directly with sunlight, it can affect the lifespan. And the warranty on those cameras is five years. And under deferred maintenance, we have been replacing cameras based on those and those larger projects. As you can see, there's been a big emphasis on security cameras over the past three years. The school sites that do not have notes, actually, like Tilly Elementary, per instance, did have a camera system that was installed with the school site, so they are close, are close to that. A lot of the additional projects that are becoming forward on security cameras as we go on in the next few years will be to continue to add storage so we can make sure we have a long bank of video footage. So, during this last couple slides, I've been talking a lot about deferred maintenance and modernization. So, really quick, just want to explain, I'm sure everybody knows what it is, but what modernization is. And, you know, state law defines modernization as any modification to a permanent structure that is at least 25 years old or a portable classroom that is 20 years old that will enhance the structure's ability to achieve educational purpose. So, next, we're going to talk about this year and what we are looking to do. So, with this year, we have a budget of $2 million, and in the next couple slides, you'll see a budgeted amount of $1.7 million with $300,000 reserved for emergency repairs. And so, last year, before we get into this year, sorry. Last year, I wanted to go over what we completed and the total dollar amount. You can see, we did about $1 million out of our deferred and four point, almost about 4.5 million out of our ESER funds. I wanted to highlight specifically the restrooms we did over at Biola and Houghton Kearney. That was a big topic last year, and we wanted to try something, and we renovated those restrooms over at Biola and Houghton Kearney. We did have some issues at Biola with DSA. And the complications we had with that, having to lose some fixtures right before school starting was a definite challenge. And luckily, we were able to pivot and provide them the same number of toilets because of some other restrooms that weren't being used, but it was a unforeseen challenge there. Because of that and the issues with DSA and ADA, I personally, I don't recommend that they live in the deferred maintenance plan due to those unforeseen changes. When projects are temperamental and can be affected by an outside organization and not something that I can almost always plan for, it makes it difficult for us to be prepared and deliver on those goals. Another, just a quick example of something like this when stuff goes to DSA is over at Hernan Barstow, Fresno County, did a portable project. It wasn't us, but since the portables were on our property, they actually affected our staff restrooms there. And that was a big point of contention. They changed stuff without really us being able to say yes or no because it went to DSA, and DSA has the final say. So, that was a big problem. So, due to those unforeseen issues and impacts, it could definitely impact the project outside the scope of what we originally intended to get done. All right. So, now, finally, the 2024-2025 plan. I did split this up into two slides just to try to make it easier to read. As you can see, we have a project, or we have one point, roughly $1.7 million allocated already for projects. A couple of the projects that we're highlighting is we have to replace some kitchen flooring at a couple of school sites. I'll also highlight Roosevelt Elementary. You'll see replace cafeteria HVAC. This is only for the install cost. The board is approving tonight, hopefully, the cost to purchase the equipment. So, you'll see that actually on the next slide that where I've also included that cost. A couple of the other things we're doing over at Teague and at Rio Vista is even though we have some issues with DSA in restrooms, there's still stuff that we want to try to take care of under deferred maintenance and routine restricted. So, this year, we're still going to be doing some work at some restrooms. We are going to be replacing all fixtures that aren't part of the cow shape and also replacing the partitions in the restroom. So, and for all intensive purposes, when you walk into that restroom, those restrooms will look brand-new with the fixtures and those partitions. Some of the projects, or not some, the prioritization of those projects have been, you know, need, safety, and then funding availability. If you see a small project in there, it's because I can, we had a little bit of money left over so I can get something done. You know, that $50,000, $100,000, I could split over into two, two school sites and replace some kitchen flooring. All of these projects, if approved, are expected to be completed this school year, and they would be coming back to you individually still under a itemized board agenda to approve. So, this is slowly continued. The next block is some additional projects that we need if we are able to get some additional funding, totaling about $2.7 million. We also have some preschool playground replacements that has, was previously approved last year that is still going to go into this year at Biola, Hernan Barstow, and Teague Elementary. And then down at the bottom is that Roosevelt Elementary equipment only for the $99,775 for the HVAC replacement. I wanted to plan out next year's projects with what is our priority right now, and they're still focusing around safety. You can see a lot of replacement of PA systems and clocks. And then again, you'll see what I have with that same assumption of the $2 million budget, sticking to the roughly $1.5 million budgeted with $500,000 for reserves. So, that's the presentation, just a couple points. There is a lot of need, and we are trying to prioritize everything and keep these projects moving to improve our school sites. The deferred maintenance plan is not meant to be a reactive plan or a one-off solution. We need to bridge our school sites from construction to modernization over those 25 years. And the big part is just not being a one-off solution. Continue to do this every year and really see the fruits of that labor. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. We are asking this item to be placed at the next board meeting for action, and I'm open to hearing the board's concerns, wishes, and any changes that need to be made.
Clerk Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. So...
Actually, sorry, I apologize. Clerk Kerfond, I just want to make sure, before we move to comments and questions from the board, if we have, since we moved this item, to just make sure if there's any questions or comments from the public on this item to make sure that you submit them to...
I don't have any of this time, but we could give like 30 seconds.
Sure.
Setting 30 seconds of the clock. Okay, so, our first comment is from Judy Martinez.
Thank you. I appreciate you moving this up. I didn't realize it was going to be moved up on the board agenda. I initially signed up for public comments. So, I hopefully, my statements, I know you all received an email from me regarding our facilities. And first of all, I should, let me back up a little bit. Good evening, President Chan and Board Trustees. So, as you know, I spoke at one of the last board meetings to address the concerns that we have at Teague. To provide some context, I emailed you, and I let you know that we had filed a Williams compliance complaint, which highlighted several facility issues. And while the district's response states that we are in compliance, since Teague is not a new or modernized school, our concerns go far beyond compliance on paper. Our focus is on the inequities, the inequalities, and the safety of our students and staff. For example, we currently have only one TKK3 special day class, and one kindergarten class with bathrooms and sinks inside their classrooms that are the appropriate height for them, while the two other TKK classes do not. This creates unfair conditions for our students and our educators. And how can we ensure equity when some students have access to bathrooms and sinks in their classrooms when others do not? Looking ahead, per the California Ed Code, by the 2025-26 school year, we will be enrolling three-year-olds who are not required to be potty trained. This will create additional challenges if they share restrooms with older students, like the first and second graders that they currently are sharing them with. Where will they be changed? This is not just a logistical issue, but a serious safety and hygiene concern. We also face significant issues with parking and a lack of adequate women's bathrooms. I think I can speak for the Teague community and say that we are very happy to hear that the parking issues are being addressed. So, thank you very much for that. So, as a community, we hope that you are listening to our concerns, and we hope that we can count on your support to address these issues and provide Teague with the facilities it needs to ensure the safety and equity of our students, staff, and the community. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
President Singh, I don't have any other comments from the public.
Thank you. If I can invite back up Director Bott and open it now up to any questions or comments from the board. I saw, initially, I saw trustee mailing and then to you, trustee Kerfond.
Thank you. My only question would be, for Houghton Kearney, you guys said that the parking lots go into DSA. And my question would be, why would, are we resurfacing or are we extending the parking lot? I don't understand why we're going through DSA if we're just going to...
Thank you for that question. So, it had to go to DSA for access compliance. So, that's the only thing it had to go for. And it's a, kind of a reconstruction and utilizing some additional space that they had on the east end of that parking lot. So, that's, that's the gist of that.
So, you're extending out the parking lot, making it bigger?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. So, for each of these items where we list each school site, such as HVAC, paint, floor coverings, when it says last project completed and there is an empty square, does that mean that site is using its original project or is it, we don't have the information?
It could be both. Majority of them, I just don't have the information. We're going, like I said, we've been going through old agendas, and I have majority of the information for the past 10 years of what I can remember that happened, but not the concrete backup.
Okay. So, when this item comes back for action or consent, if we know a site has its, using its original HVAC, for example, can we just list original use?
Yes.
Is that possible?
I can make that change.
Thank you. My next question is, when it comes to our school roofs, and I know we have three different types of roofs in this district, when we get to our deferred maintenance or modernizing the roofs, are we trying to lean towards the metal roofs, changing it from a shingle to metal just because they have a longer lifespan that seems to be a better use for us, especially if, you know, some of our roofs are older than myself?
No, exactly. So, I try to, in my head, the way I look at it is that high slope, low slope, flat roof. So, where we have that shingle roof, where it's that high slope, yes, we want to go to the metal roof. If you look at our sister schools, you'll see where some of those roofs are almost vertical or vertical, and those would get changed out to metal. There is a cost, obviously, and that is part of the problem, but, you know, we got to figure out a way to get it done.
So, when possible, are we aiming for a replacing with a metal or two-ply roof? Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
As long as that's, you know, in 10 years, if there's a roofing breakthrough and there's something that gives us longer...
Within architecture feasibility.
Yep.
And then, my last point is, on page 12, we established that we have a $1.7 million budget for deferred maintenance each year. Is that correct? Can I understand that?
So, it's a $2 million budget. I am planning for a 1.7 of work, keeping a $300,000 for reserves in case a project goes over or we have an emergency between now and...
Okay. So, aside from the reserve, 1.7 million then?
Yes.
So, my question is, so for the '23-'24 school year, thanks to the ESER funding, we only had to spend about $1 million of our own money. So, what did we do with the other $700,000?
Good evening. What we have done is we focused on ESER funding last year when I started because there wasn't a fund established on MNO. So, this is the first year we are kind of supporting the $2 million. Last year, we kind of used the ESER fund to go through the MNO projects.
So, the $2 million deferred maintenance, that, that number is new?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No further questions then. Thank you for your presentation.
Trustee Solis?
Sir? Your mic? Commenting on your statement that the long-term planning isn't a, doesn't respond to existing emergencies or existing needs, with the understanding that through the direction of the board, administration may change the usage of a facility where we may add extra staff. We may have extra programs that parents are going to have to come onto our sites to utilize, which then will change the flow in, such as parking lots and whatnot. Is that being considered, or is your department being informed when the usage of these facilities is changing so that you can compare, prepare the facility for that use?
That process, if there's a change... That process, if there's a change, no, not being notified. I don't think that process is 100% there. I think people are being notified and we're trying to work toward it. It's the, what can we do without opening up that DSA versus replace what's there? I think those concerns are something we're trying to work through between right now, between me and Mr. Rodriguez. We're trying to figure out a way to be better prepared and ready to get ready for these changes so we're not playing catch-up.
So then more as a comment, it seems like there should be some communication between yourself and our administrative team that when we are changing, and that may, our administration team may be doing it at the direction of the board, changing the use of these sites and requiring extra staffing there or having more parent contact there, that they communicate that to you so then you can do your assessment of that site's needs for anything needed. Extra restrooms, larger parking lots, that type of thing. Would you agree?
Yeah, like I said, within that system. And, you know, at the end of the day, we work with the board if there's direction that you would like us to follow and explore. We're more than happy to do that.
Okay. The problems you stated you had at another school site with DSA and bathrooms, are we talking about that in their opinion you needed to move walls or anything like that?
Their opinion being DSA's opinion?
Yeah.
Their direction was to remove, at Biola was to remove fixtures because it wasn't to ADA code. And so when we, the second, the wall was, or the toilet was moved, DSA got brought in, they had to review the drawings, and that's when they made that distinction that it had to be changed to meet the current ADA code.
Okay, so depending on the level of remodeling you were doing, you might run into the needs to move a wall?
Yeah, if the work has to be done by an outside agency, something we're not able to do in-house because of skill level or the amount of work, the second, even if it's something as small as having somebody come in from the outside and change a faucet, would trigger DSA review with ADA check.
So would you say it's a fair statement? The older the facility that you're remodeling, and I'm speaking about bathrooms, the more likely you're going to have to either go into a wall or move a wall?
That is true, yes.
I guess my next question is for Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, sir.
It is my opinion, one of the factors in the need for the parking lot at Teague was a fact that this board, with the request of parents, added extra teaching staff to that facility. I'm assuming that extra staff is driving to work, which means they have to have somewhere to park. Also, shortly after doing that, there was a take-back on an agreement we had with another facility to utilize their parking lot?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, you did mention that you had a proposal for a temporary fix? What's the timeline of that?
So currently, I have a draft. I'm still working, our office is still working on it. I would say the timeline would most likely be around Christmas break, that we could see that.
Will that require board approval?
It's going to be a temporary parking lot, so the number, the cost may not exceed the statutory requirements to bring it to board.
Okay. If it does go over that amount, I would like that proposal to come to us and be scheduled with, or chair, on the next agenda item, our next board meeting.
I will do so, sir.
If it exceeds that amount. As far as I'm concerned, the delay has been long enough on the parking lot. We need to get that done. Do you have a temporary fix, since it may be a long time before we get to those, and I'm talking about past Christmas break, to get to the remodeling of the bathrooms? And I'm not talking about just sticking it in a sink.
So depending on what we're looking for on the outcome, are we looking, like I said, with the work that we're planning on doing is replacement of all the sinks, replacement of all the toilets, replacement of all of the urinals, and replacement of all of the partitions. Is there something additional you would like to see?
Part of the problems and the complaints that the parents are saying is the bathrooms have a disgusting odor. Part of the reason is that tile work is the original tile work. The odor is in the tile work. You can clean it and scrub it all day long and in 30 minutes, the smell's going to be there again. So basically, you're talking about a complete remodeling job, tearing out all the tile, putting in new toilets, putting in new, the bear, the walls around the toilets and new faucets at the appropriate height so the younger kids can wash their hands.
That would be something that we need to not only design but send over to DSA for review. There would be, with the age of Teague, tying it kind of a little bit back to the presentation and when I brought up hazard abatement, there's always an assumption that everything we have has abatement, or, sorry, has asbestos and we have to test for it to be able to show that it doesn't. So just alone on that with those ceiling tiles, it would trigger it and then that would also mean right away ADA, DSA review.
So timeline on going through that process to get the bathrooms totally remodeled?
Realistically, looking at that, looking at the budget, I would say nothing shorter than a year. It would have to go with design and then get bid out.
Are you aware, are you aware of any temporary fixes we could put at the site, such as putting in portable bathrooms? And I'm not talking about the little plastic porta-potties. I'm talking about a mobile building that basically has nothing but bathrooms.
That's something I would have to discuss a little bit further. That is something I can review and bring back at a later point.
Could you bring it back and have, if I request that the chair put it on the agenda with the other item? Be totally frank, my opinion is, I'm not willing to wait another year. I want something done. Now whether that's a temporary fix like Mr. Rodriguez did with his parking lot, I'm requiring on your expertise and your staff's expertise to come to some sort of fix and we need the fix now, not later.
Okay.
Make sense?
Just need to research it a little bit and be able to provide that information.
Okey-dokey. That's it for me, sir.
So again, just as a reminder for all, we're looking much more in terms of the deferred maintenance as a plan, as a whole. Trustee Kriya?
So I have a few questions, but I'm a bit confused by trustee Solis's comments and questions. So, and I don't know if anyone else is. I'm not aware, and maybe it was a meeting I missed, so colleagues, please remind me. Have we had a discussion about what work needs to be done with Teague specifically about those restrooms? I don't think that there's an item that's been presented to our board with the restrooms. We saw them for Biola and some of, I'm sorry, okay, that's what I thought, HK. My recollection about Teague was we had a workshop a month or two ago for a board and we talked about, and I remember trustee Kerfond specifically advocating to prioritize Teague. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct. That was during our workshop.
So where do the restrooms that I think you were talking about, trustee Solis? You're referring just to the restrooms, right? Where do those restrooms fall in the order of work that we have here?
So they're going to fall under Teague Elementary on page 14, under the item "Replace Partition, Restroom Partitions and Fixtures." That was the work that I had planned to do at the Teague site specifically.
And is this the order in which the projects...
Or, no, it's alphabetical, I'm sorry.
Okay. And so you mentioned that the way you prioritize the projects is based on safety?
Well, there's need, safety, and just funding. If I have, you know, $100,000 left and I know there's a project like the kitchen flooring that I can get and do something at two sites, I try to do that. And sorry, it's, so you'll see elementary's first, middle school, high school. That's the, so not really alphabetical, but broken up in those. Elementary schools, then a middle school, and then high schools.
Sure, go ahead.
If I can clarify, based on what you were just describing about the workshop, that list, that prioritize list is to modernize. That's to do the whole project, the walls, the floors. Some of the fixtures stay, as I understand. If they're, if we have some new fixtures in there, they wouldn't have to be replaced right away.
Correct.
That list was for all modernizations, state funding, what order in Teague was, is on that list. What he's referring to is everything he can do between now and then that can be fixed. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
So does the district, not district, I'm sorry. Do we as a board need to take action as far as prioritizing? So other than receiving a complaint, which we have, we have, thank you Judy and everyone else who sent letters, other than the community pointing those things and shouting the loudest for their project, how do you go about evaluating which is the next project in line? Or is that something that we as a board should be asking about? Like, how do we know about these conditions that, I'm not...
So just so I can make sure I'm understanding, are you looking for a prioritization on the items listed? Or are you more wondering about items that might not be listed and get moved in?
So perhaps I'm asking what you all need from us, rather than having these decisions and being pulled by recognizing what some of the more urgent concerns are with the facility based on our community informing us?
Good evening. The list we have right now is a kind of priority list, but you as a board can change it if you want to.
Okay.
We just gave this list, but if you want to interchange, you're welcome to do that.
The direction as well, when they started working on this project, was every campus would have routine deferred maintenance. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, but you identified based on age, safety concerns, and then met with the principal and determined some of the ordering. So the things that happened last year, perhaps the site would have said, well, if these three things need to get done, this one is the most pressing, if it's flooring or furniture or something like that. So there was some discussion about if we have a project we can do at each and every campus, we have this much money, we have these needs, which of these needs are the most pressing? And so that's what created the original two years of the list.
One more thing is, the list we have doesn't need to go to DSA. This is a list that we do the work. So this is not a list where anything goes to DSA.
The list on page 14?
Yes.
Okay. So the work that's needed for the Teague restrooms, the concerns that we've heard...
That's going to be done in-house.
Okay, okay.
That's, and to trustee Solis's point, when he was talking about the ceiling and the ceiling tiles and the smell, I want to investigate a little bit more and try to figure out what I can do to not have to go that route, see if there is something, you know, I don't want to say no when I don't know. But if we did, you know, that's why doing something like that would trigger that DSA review because we have to have somebody else come on-site and do that work.
Okay. And I guess that was my question and I said, you know, folks who shout the loudest, I don't mean any offense to anyone. We appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out, when we're talking about equity and the needs of our campuses and this deferred maintenance and us allocating enough funds for you to be able to do the work, and probably more help to be able to get everything done?
I mean, when it comes to facilities, I mean, the more we can do now is better. It's cheaper this year than it will be next year. So that's always going to be the case and I'm sure that's the case with almost everything around the district. But yeah, I mean, our, you know, I ended kind of the presentation with, we have a lot of needs. We're trying to prioritize, we're trying to skillfully attack every project as we can. But releasing whatever restrictions we can is going to make the system go a lot smoother.
Trustee Sellers and trustee Kerfond?
Thank you. The parking lot project at Houghton Kearney that had to go through DSA, how long did that take for that process to be approved?
It had comments, so it took around six months to get approved.
When I look at the '24-'25 plan, and I know it's just stated that none of these projects are anticipated to have to go through DSA, if along the way a project does trigger something, do we have an alternative list of projects or the '25-'26 school year projects that we could start working on?
Yeah, that's typically, if you'll, the next page on page 15, that top portion is additional projects if we receive funding, but that's also if, it could be something where we're able to get something done a little bit lower. We don't have any emergencies come March. You know, those $300,000, release them, try to get some of these other projects taken care of. Then those are listed on page 15 on the top half.
Okay, I missed that. My next question was the maintenance buildings that are at Hernan Barstow and Teague Elementary. Do we have a plan to relocate those operations?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Kerfond wants to jump in, but it was discussed and...
I think we discussed it in the facility workshop. If the bond passes, then one of the things is going to be the modernization of Hernan Barstow. That way we can move the grounds to a new site. So it's like a chain reaction.
So if those facilities are relocated, does that free up more parking at Teague?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Would we have to go through DSA at that point?
Yes, the whole modernization has to go through DSA.
Okay. So in terms of dollars, the, I know there's a need for it and the sooner the better. But if there's, we're going to invest money in a temporary fix and then turn around and scrap that project and redo the parking lot to be more efficient, is there a trigger in there that we're going to stop with a temporary project?
The temporary is, we don't have to take a DSA and it's just, it's not going, we won't need a major repair. It's just going to be few minor repairs, just to make that parking lot temporary.
Estimated dollar amount?
I think we are looking at around, what is it? No, no, just temporarily. Teague.
For Teague.
For Teague?
Yeah.
Should be under $50,000.
Under $50,000, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. Just a comment. I'm glad that we are cheering loudly for Teague tonight. Now this, it is on our list of modernization, but as this board, you know, voted during our workshop, it's not the top of our modernization list, you know. So we will see how we get there, but I wish we could have done this cheering back last month at our workshop so we can, you know, get, take a little bit higher on our priority list. Thank you.
Trustee Solis?
Crude voice of reality again. I will remind the board, we had previously received from administration a two-page list of projects. At that time, the board approved moving the Teague project to the front of the page, moving it from something like number 18 to number four or five on the list. So it was approved to move the project up higher on the priority list. With that, sir, in your calculation of projects that need to be done and also I'm assuming you're meeting with the finance department about what exactly our school bond will cover, I'm assuming you're going to do a recalculation if Proposition 2 gets passed because we will be able to utilize some funds for that for projects, remodeling?
Yeah, Prop 2 being the state bond, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so those thoughts have already happened. I don't want to say we're waiting, we're going to move forward, but obviously, come November, we're going to have to reevaluate and make sure we're using our resources correctly.
All right. That's it for me.
Thank you, Director Bott. I have a couple of different comments and, well, I just also want to make sure that the community has a clarification. While we moved the priority... While we moved the prioritization for Bible and Teague Elementary a bit higher, it was still under our threshold of where the majority of this board decided to do for the bond. So it's important to have that context. First, I want to commend you all, but I kind of want to also issue a challenge to us. You all have done a lot with too little. Sorry, Dr. Director Bott, I may have a question for you in this too. No, no, you're fine. On average, that's about eighty thousand dollars per school. We as a board need to, if, if budgets tell our priorities and our values, spending less than one percent of our total budget of the year on deferred maintenance is a, it's an indictment of what we're actually doing for our facilities. That has to be radically increased. I think, where I think might be helpful for, for you and for our board to have a discussion is, while all of our priority projects essentially are at the end of those lifespans, if things like paint, our school is important, I think it's for us as a board to figure out the budgeting tactic, we say, we don't want to wait twenty years. We, or fifteen to twenty years, for instance, for paint, but we want our schools painted every eight years, and there's going to be a cost to us. There's, there's always going to be sort of choices, choices made. But I think that sort of instruction from the, from the board would probably be extremely helpful for, for you all and your department. I did notice, at least in the prioritization projects, that we have, for instance, no paint projects and no furniture projects, at least for the upcoming year. So I think that has to kind of take a, a bit of a rethink. When, when this plan does return to us as, as an action item, and, and maybe this is important for us to potentially, like, sort of maybe even talk to like an outside contractor, but how do we actually go from next project planned to next project scheduled? Because with, and I, and I want to say, I appreciate, because essentially you were playing the role of an archivist and a historian to even try to put all this data for information, and it's actually, to me, slightly appalling that we hadn't done this before. That has nothing to do with you, that has to do with like, where we are, but here is where we are. So, so, so for me is like, we may have to actually talk to an outside contractor to trustee, vice president Carrillo's point, so that we can actually tell the community when these projects are actually planned. So, so it's not just a, a planned, like, you know, somewhere in this five years, but we actually say, no, the school is scheduled for this year, and it's not just, you know, constantly at sort of up in the air. I know that's going to take an increase in money, and in terms of like a format, I would really suggest, I made a little bit of a note, and I could provide that to superintendent Davis, but for instance, like a single sheet, where we have each of the schools, have the columns, all of these different things that you've sort of prioritized, so we would have to, and maybe color code it, whether we're, what is sort of the life, life scale. I know this is a new, brand new thing that you're, you're creating, I'm just trying to think in terms of future boards. What we're doing is an important step to, to set this, to set this district on the right track, but I, but I also just want to, again, highlight, highlight the point that spending like, less than one percent of our total budget, annual budget on, on deferred maintenance, again, that has nothing to do with you all, but it's, it's just too little. It's just too, way, way too little. I, you know, yeah.
Ditto. As a lot of people, I'm sure, in the audience, and even, you know, we all agree, yes.
So the, this item, I'll provide a little bit, some of the comments to mine for superintendent Davis in terms of, as this returns at our next board item under action, but, but kind of coming up with a format that, that would be able to, to live in a more extended way. Thank you, Director Bott.
Thank you.
Now we open up to superintendent and board communications.
You ready? Okay. So just a couple of things for you, I want to share with you, congratulations to Justin Garza High School's choir. Our choir director, Evelyn Shu, just notified us that she was, and the choir was accepted to the CMEA State Music Festival this school year. Each year, every choir that earns a unanimous superior or highest rating is invited to audition, and it's a blind audition, and Justin Garza High School's choir was selected. There will be one of ten choirs, and the only one from the Central Valley, that will be able to be attending and performing at the concert in March. So congratulations to them. Yes, definitely. And per the discussion that was happening before, we do have Measure X, the one hundred nine million general obligation bond, on the ballot for November fifth, so I did provide you each with an advanced copy of an informational flyer that will be shared out with our community. It will go out, and you know, as you see it, English on one side, Spanish on the other side, with a QR code also for Punjabi. And we do have an informational page on our website, and are using social media announcements and things to help inform the community of what is to be included or done with those bond dollars, if they want to learn more about the bond measure or have questions on that. So if you have any questions that come your way, and we can help with providing information, please, please route those my way. This Thursday, I also want to share that we will be participating in apparent empowerment family literacy night that Fresno County Superintendent of Schools is hosting, but it's being held at our neighborhood Teague Community Resource Center about reading matters. We have guest readers. Dr. Lopez is going to be part of the, the planning and, and the presentation of it, and I'll have an opportunity to as well, so we're excited about that, to come to fruition this week. And then I can't believe I'm saying this, but the Fresno Fair begins next week, October second to the fourteenth, and next Wednesday night will be our academic all-stars, our four-point-oh night, where students are recognized for academic performance, and then I can't wait to visit and see all of our students that are participating in various animal, plant, welding, construction, art, fashion events throughout the fair. So that's right around the corner. We'll keep you posted, and that's all for me.
Thank you. We now open to comments from the public on, I'm sorry, trustee Krefan?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the fire that broke out in the south part of our district today, you know, it caused a lot of disruption to our students and families that have, have students that attend Pershing and Pathway, and I wanted to say thank you to all the firefighters that made sure that there was no structural damage, you know, the fires extending to the schools, so that didn't happen. Thank you to those firefighters, including our own board member, Joshua Sellers, who is part of our fire department, so, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Krefan, and, and thank you to the, to obviously our fire department and all of our people to ensure the safety. Next, we turn to comments from the public, again, on items that are not on the agenda. Clerk Krefan?
All right, our first comment is from Anita Galvez. Is Anita home? Oh, Chavez, sorry. All right, thank you Ms. Chavez, and you'll have three minutes, whenever you begin.
I actually, not, I wasn't prepared, but my comments, I'm going to pass my minutes over to Ms. Marie Venegas, if possible, please.
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
So Ms. Venegas, whenever you're ready. And you'll have six minutes.
Good evening. I came here to speak about a very specific situation that makes me question...
Please turn your mic on, ma'am.
It is.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I came here to speak about a very specific situations that make me question consistency and intelligence the district holds. I will get straight to the point by speaking about Coach Cantu and this entire situation that drove you guys to place him on admin leave, and then to fire him. I do hope the board is aware of the entire situation, because as a mother of family, especially kids with, Coach Cantu does have, are the most important thing to not pay someone. In today's world, is a real sneaky way of targeting his family, making his kids suffer more than anything. During the allegations towards Coach Cantu, he was interviewed by the head coach, athletic director, vice principal, and the campus police officer who works for Fresno PD. All interviews coming out with the same exact outcome, which was inconclusive. A meeting was held in the father, with the father, and to where the father asked for a conflict resolution, paper designed which states, he wants no more to get in trouble at all, for some reason was not provided this form by the vice principal. The meeting designed for Coach Cantu, the father to talk to, talk for, they had a decent relationship, but was also denied to go to the meeting. With the story change of the alleged victim, it made it very clear that this was just an excuse for you guys to take it and run, since you guys had been targeting him way before any hand. After four interviews, HR still decided to investigate, and that is when you guys said you wanted to hire a private investigator. After the private investigator reached out to the parents, two detectives spoke with Coach Cantu as well. Those two detectives both just, both stated, no, no charges recommended whatsoever were, and no charges have been filed. Coach Cantu does not work at Justin Garza, he is not around the campus, clearly does not pose any threat to the community, so my question is why he was specifically targeted to fire? You have a football coach at Justin Garza urinating in the trainer's room. On camera, your athletic director and vice principal notified HR, this was swept under the rug. The same, the same coach cursed at a student in the locker room, saying, stop being a B and get the F out. HR only gave him a small class to do over the summer, though. You have a head custodian at Justin Garza right now, who has an active domestic violence case, been arrested for the incident, has an act, active restraining order for over two years, which made you guys place him on admin leave with P, for just a small period of time, only to, only for him to come back with restrictions at work. During his time back, he then walks around telling everyone, both HR and custodial supervisors, day and night, give him permission to break the restraining order, only if it is work-related. January twenty-third, February tenth, and April twenty-sixth are all the days he was somewhere he was not supposed to be, especially in the position he was covering during that time, he is not assigned to those sites. Recently, you gave him the option to force Alex Lopez out of head custodian, which raises more questions, given the fact that even upon recent events, breaking his restraining order again, and being arrested on September third on district grounds, being placed on admin leave with P again, and now back to work again, how does this show consistency on Coach Cantu's part? Coach Cantu has no active case, no restraining order, no charges filed, nothing whatsoever. You haven't paid him in the last four months. While this other custodian has an active domestic violence case, active restraining order, and been arrested twice for the same incident, I don't see how this makes sense. This man is, is safe around, how's it make sense that this man is safe around kids at all, if he's not even safe around his own kids without mediation, meditated visitation? Coach Cantu, you guys see as a threat, a mentor for kids K through twelve, someone who dedicated his, his time to the NAMI club, helped many students with resumes, and got jobs, and good-paying ones at that, and even helped in tutoring class and create a work plan for them to do better, for not, not for just wrestling, but for educational purposes. It's almost as if you guys try harder to push coaches away, rather than to keep the ones who love, who, who have love for those kids and the sport. We struggle to find coaches here in Central, from elementary to high school, but you guys truly do not care for any of it. Coach Miko was fired by HR because he supposedly told athletes, athletes that they do not have to talk to the private investigator without parents, or if they did not want, want to. In all truth, this is one hundred percent false statement, for he never said that, but it makes me question too, if he did, or if he, or if anyone gave these kids the advice because they felt uncomfortable. Why is that a bad thing? You guys interviewed a couple of athletes without parental consent and swept, swept that under the rug as well. Coach Miko is in the room every single day, and tried to, and just to try to fire him with no reason, makes no sense at all. Coach Miko has many meetings scheduled ahead of time to speak with HR, making him show up and wait thirty minutes just to be told it's canceled, once again. Trying to fire coaches for such little things like that makes it, makes it such a toxic environment, and makes all staff question too, as if it's even worth coaching at all. I hope the board can see the frustration, and I do hope the board actually does something. I hope the community sees, all Central does is maintain their image, rather than just truly show up and do good work for the community. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Melody's Venegas. Pardon if I mispronounced your name. M, M E L Q? Miguel?
My time was for Marines, so...
Okay. In that case, our next comment is for Jacob Venegas. Ishmael Venegas? Okay, then, board president, I have no other comments.
Thank, thank you clerk Krefan. We next move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I just wanted to make a quick comment for our...
We have a motion, so we need a second and then discussion.
So a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Krefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Oh. Oh.
Just a quick comment, President Singh. Just want to highlight, you know, for Teague Elementary on item six on our consent, we, our site will be adding the Wild Robot to their curriculum, which, from what I hear, is a fantastic movie that's out this weekend. So if you want a preview, go, go check out the movie.
Thank you. Sorry, who, who seconded the item?
It was myself.
You, you did, okay. So a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Krefan, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six-zero. We move on to our action items. Our first action item for the evening is to hold a public hearing and adopt Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, ten regarding instructional materials for Williams' compliance. Director English.
Good evening, President Singh, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. This item returns from the previous agenda, and all of our sites have completed the required information to demonstrate Williams' compliance. We would now like to hold a hearing to declare sufficiency in Williams' compliance and adopt Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash ten.
We now open up the, the hearing. If we have thirty seconds, unless we have anyone comment.
Thirty seconds have passed, no calls at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we close the hearing, and do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Carrillo, a second by trustee Krefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six-zero. Thank you. We move on to action item number two, accept gifts to district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Hello again. We have Central High School ASB received a thousand dollar donation from Raising Cain. Administration's recommending the board to accept the gifts to the district.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Krefan?
Thank you to Raising Cain's, your chicken is delicious.
Indeed.
I move to accept the gift.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Carrillo, a second by trustee Krefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six-zero. We move on to action item number three, approve revised board policies. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you, these policies return from the prior meeting, and we do recommend an approval of all of them that are ready to go. I do believe there's a question about forty-two, one-eighteen, perhaps, that we were going to hold on to that one for another meeting, which was fine with us, I just don't know if there's any other ones to, to continue on.
Trustee Carrillo?
Yes, before I, I make a motion, I do want to pull BP forty-two, eighteen. I need more time to finish reviewing it, I do have some feedback, and I have not had the opportunity to, to finish, so that's on, on my end. If there's, that's the only one I have, if no one else has any others, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining board policies, and have BP forty-two, eighteen return at a future board meeting.
I'll, I'll second tabling forty-two, eighteen.
But are you seconding the motion to move all the other ones except that one?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion by trustee Carrillo, a second by trustee Krefan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six-zero. We move on to item number four, approve authorization to file notice of completion for district-wide lighting project. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you, board president, and board of trustees, and superintendent Davis. For your, for your, your approval tonight is, is the board authorization to file a notice of completion for the district-wide lighting project. A notice of completion is a document that establishes the official date that a construction project is considered complete. This is standard industry practice, and for public record. Staff has reviewed and recommends approval of this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this notice of completion.
Trustee Correa.
Just to confirm, this also triggers any deadlines to file any claims, right? There's additional, other than standard practice, there's additional implications by completing the notice of, by filing the notice of completion?
In the outside, not non-public works, yes. But in our case, what, what it does is we have a, a system in place in our, our bid documents that's been reviewed and written by legal counsel, they have a stop notice payment section in there. So at any time, the suppliers, subcontractors are not paid, we are obligated by law to hold 125% of that value from the pay application of that contractor. So, these things typically come up during the construction process.
Right.
So, to answer your question, yes. In the private sector, and, yes, you would be correct.
Well, I'm more interested in knowing whether then there's any effect for our projects. So this notice for, of completion is, is in fact just simply routine?
Yes, because, yeah. And it's just when persons, like entities, like gathering construction information, they typically want to see something when the project was completed, what the value was. And so we, it's easy for us to go and give them this document and dig through a bunch of records.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Correa.
Second.
Second by Trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0. We move on to action item number five, approve employee out-of-state travel. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lopez.
Hello again. The following request for out-of-state travel is attached for the SCL Exchange Conference. So Fresno County Superintendent, Superintendent of Schools has received a grant to provide professional development to three districts within our area. They selected our district, and as such, they will be paying for this conference, for everything needed for the conference, including travel. So we are suggesting that Cassie Smith, our supervisor for Climate and Culture and Safety, attends this conference, along with two other supervisor, I'm so sorry, administrators at school sites. They will be receiving social, emotional learning, professional development that they can bring back and support our district and ensure that, ensuring that we enhance our multi-tier systems of support.
Questions to, Trustee Kervan?
Thank you to Fresno County Superintendent of Schools for the CalHope grant.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Correa, a second by Trustee Kervan. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0. Thank you. We move on to our information items, beginning with item number two, receive information regarding revised board policies. Superintendent Davis.
We've got a few policies. I think Dr. Lopez will cover all of them, and then we'll return them next meeting and add the one that we pulled just previously.
The first board policy being presented tonight is BP 5144 for discipline. The policy is updated to reflect the new law SB 291, which begins this academic year. It prohibits a school staff member from denying a student's recess unless the student participation poses an immediate threat to the physical safety of the students. I do want to add that professional development has been provided to our leaders, as well as our teachers, at the beginning of the year, and once approved, we will continue with that availability of supports. The next board policy is BP 5144.1, and it's around suspension and expulsion, due process policy. And regulation was updated to reflect the new law SB 419, which adds grades four through eight to the prohibition of suspension of students by the district for disrupting school activities or willfully defying the authority of the school personnel. This policy only included K through three prior to the update. Policy also renews new law AB 9A2, which requires the district to provide a student who is suspended for two or more days with a homework and assignments during the period of suspension. There were two options as part of this update. We are selecting option one, which follows our current practices as a district. BP 5145.3, non-discrimination and harassment is our next one. The policy was updated, updated to reflect the new federal regulation 33474, which clarifies that discrimination on the basis of sex, including sex-based harassment for the purposes of Title IX, including sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, gender identity, sexual orientation, pregnancy, childbirth, termination of pregnancy, and the list goes on. It was attached for you. We are recommending that these policies return for action in our next meeting. We do have our last one, which is individualized education program. Board policy 6159. The policy is updated to include the requirement, formerly BP AR 0430, with, which covers IEP plans, and just ensuring that we provide the appropriate public education FAP to students who have been suspended or expelled from school, or who are placed by the district in a non-public, nonsectarian school. This is a policy that we current, currently follow as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Kervan?
Thank you, President Singh. So, for, and thank you, Dr. Lopez, for board policy 5145.3, am I understanding it correctly that there are, there is no event where we can, or we could, event with this passes, for the governing board to refuse a new textbook or instructional material?
So that, yes, the discrimination policy is, it, it lives in the Title IX complaint procedures, is that what we're talking about right now? The non-discrimination harassment policy? So this one is related to any type of access that our students may have. They can't be discriminated against because of, yeah, their sexual orientation, or the many other-
Okay, thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I was understanding that one. Thank you.
So there's a, you're talking about the recent bill that was just passed earlier this legislative session, like two months ago?
No, it's, this references AB 1078, which is from 2023.
Right. But, but your comment about not being able to discriminate based on the text and the prohibition on the board?
Not quite. I guess it says that governing board is unlawful for, to refuse the use of a textbook or instructional material. I just want to know, is there any instance where a board could say this book doesn't belong in the curriculum?
This board policy doesn't reflect that. This focuses more on, again, discrimination against students. It also goes over racist bullying and our, how we respond to those scenarios.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Of course. There is another policy that I'm sure we'll see eventually, that was maybe about, and I don't have the legislative bill, those bills memorized, I just know the content of the bill, which does prohibit specifically any board, the governing board of a school district, I believe Charger School, and one other specialty school, and any agent of the district from discriminating against students or teachers based on textbooks and those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll have the item returned under, probably under action, just in case there's any additional comments or questions. We move on to item number three, receive information on migrant education programs, after-school services. Director Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Davis. It's my pleasure to bring to you for information tonight. Central's migrant education program after-school tutorial contract for 2425. Details of the services are noted on the agenda. Administration is recommending this item returned for action at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, after answering any questions you might have.
There's no other comments or questions. We'll have it returned under consent. Thank you. Item number four, receive information regarding cybersecurity network and email security.
Yes. Good evening, Board President Singh, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, the item I'm bringing forward to you is a solution to secure our internal network and email communication. The district administration and board in the past has done an excellent job of supporting, securing a perimeter around our network and our servers. This, however, will be implemented internally and inside, and monitoring our internal network activity. This gives us the ability, this new solution gives us the ability to stop any cybersecurity incidents at the source, and immediately by the software taking automated action. So, it could be 2:00 AM, something happens, and it's gonna stop it for us and notify us. We don't have to wait until, you know, there's a human action and waking up. The term solution, the term of this solution is three years. The annual cost is $108,998, and will be purchased under the Monterey County Office of Education Piggyback contract. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the October 8th board meeting, agenda for action, and I'll be happy to provide any additional information and answer any questions you may have.
Questions are coming from the board at this time? I'll have it returned under consent unless, unless there's any, I hear from any board member. Thank you, Director Martinez.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to item number five, receive information on Shields and Brooly Elementary School Project change orders for bid packages two, five, and eight. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, our change orders for the multi-prime packages two, five, and eight, and the attachments of the itemized summary for Shields and Broley Elementary School project for your review. The increase to the project is due to impacts implemented after this project was originally bid. Staff has reviewed, and also with their construction manager, and recommends that this item return to the board on October 8th, 2024, for action. And I'll stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board at this time? Then we'll have it returned under consent unless I hear anything from any of the board members. Thank you, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to advanced planning.
No changes, it's attached.
Thank you. Any additional information or closing comments? A reminder, our next board meeting will be held here Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, 6:00 PM for closed session, 7:00 PM for the public, here at our Central Unified School District office, room 13. And with that, we were going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you again.